Okay.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to a special meeting of the Englewood Cliffs Mayor and Council. Today is April 22, 2021. It's 6:34 PM, and I call this meeting to order. It's being conducted virtually via the Zoom application. And I'd like to have a roll call at this time.
Mayor Cranjack?
Here.
Councilperson Wu?
Here.
Pharaoh?
Yeah.
Park?
You.
De Gregorio?
Here.
Katrubis?
Here.
Borough Attorney?
Phil George, here.
Acting Borough Administrator?
Here.
And Municipal Clerk. Everyone's present mayor, and Mr. George is in taking over for Mr. Bernstein.
Okay, thank you, everyone, and thank you for joining. At this point in our meeting, I'd like to salute the flag of the United States of America. Please rise for the absolute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Madam Clerk, could you please read into the record the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
This meeting has been duly advertised in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, also known as the Open Public Meetings Act or Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2021 Annual Mayor and Council Meeting Schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers posted on the borough's website, posted outside the doors of Borough Municipal Building, since public access to such building is not allowed because of COVID-19. Other borough facilities were applicable and provided to all parties who have requested a copy of such notice. Because of COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting is being conducted electronically via Zoom pursuant to various executive orders promulgated by Governor Philip Murphy pursuant to the provisions of Public Law 2020, Chapter 11, which allows for meetings to be conducted electronically pursuant to various local finance notices promulgated by the State of New Jersey Department of Community Affairs Local Finance Board. Notice as to the Zoom access has also been provided according to law.
Thank you. So at this point in the meeting, and it is a special meeting, so we are limited in terms of what the council and mayor will discuss. We need to go into closed session. And to do that, I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Mayor, just for the record, note that the scheduled special session is to discuss personnel in terms of financial management, and at this time, we can enter into the executive session.
Okay, great. May the Borough Clerk please read into the record the appropriate language to get us into closed session.
Whereas the Mayor and Council of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs has deemed it necessary to go into closed session to discuss certain confidential matters, and whereas the minutes of the closed session will remain confidential as permitted under the Open Public Meetings Act, they shall be released when there is no further need for confidentiality as authorized by the Borough Attorney. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Mayor and Council of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs will go into closed session for the following matters as permitted under Open Public Meetings Act and JSA 10:4-12, Attorney-client Privilege Finance.
Okay, thank you. So to the members of the public, we are, as a governing body, going into closed session to address those matters only, and we will rejoin you, I'd say, in about 45 minutes.
Okay, I'll be placing everyone, mayor, and out of the meeting, and then we'll invite them as needed for closed session.
Right, so you'll be in a waiting room, and then when closed session is over, you'll have an opportunity in the public portion of this meeting to have public comment. Okay?
Okay.
Okay, thank you, everyone in the public for waiting for us. We are exactly 45 minutes, so that's great. Can I have a motion to come out of closed session, please?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay, so thank you to the public. We met in closed session. And Mr. George, is there anything that we're adding to the agenda that I should mention here?
If I may, Mayor, just briefly, although it's closely related, we will be adding a resolution to go out to advertise for a part-time person for the Financial Department based upon recommendations which may be made by our finance professionals in the near future.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing else was discussed, nor is there any action to be taken other than what is on the agenda, plus the added item.
And that added item will be Resolution 110.
111.
There'll be 111.
111.
Okay. Great, so at this point, let's have a motion to open to the public.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay, so I do see a few members of the public here. If anyone would like to speak, please virtually raise your hand or wave at me, or if you're on the phone and I can't see you, just unmute yourself and try to speak when no one else is speaking. When you are called upon, please state your name and address. So is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard?
I see no one, mayor.
I think Mrs. O'Shea wants to.
Hold on. Mrs. O'Shea, you're unmuted.
Yes.
You have to unmute yourself.
Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Thank you, I got it. Thank you, mayor. What I would like to speak about tonight, some of the comments that have been made and how the newspaper has sensationalized those comments. And I think it's unprofessional on the part of council people to make those types of comments about people in the borough. As an elder, older person, when somebody is of retirement age and they choose to go into retirement, you know, like they say, you know, the golden years and enjoy their life, I don't think that it's appropriate to say they're running for the hills. And I think the Bergen Record is out of line in putting those headlines in the paper, because people retire all the time when they're in their 60s, when they're in their 70s. You know, we don't work till we're 100, very few people do. There are random few, but very few work until they're 100 years old. So I take exception to the comments made by Councilman De Gregorio, and I take exception to the Katie Sobo putting them as headlines in the record. It's wrong, and it gives a very bad impression, and it's unrealistic, okay? So I really, you know, don't think that should happen. And, you know, I know Mr. De Gregorio wants to have these headlines so he can produce them and reproduce them for his political campaign in the fall, but he's doing it at the expense of the town and of the residents.
Thank you, those are very good comments, actually. You know, I've always referred to the Bergen Record as a former newspaper, and over the last couple of weeks, they certainly have shown themselves as an appendage of a political party. Mr. De Gregorio seems to have a direct line to Katie Sobko. I'm thinking someday we'll see a lawn sign with both of their names on it. It's become that hilarious about the way they conduct themselves. But, you know, it's a serious business running a borough, Mr. De Gregorio, and you have a fiduciary duty to the borough here and to its residents. So when we have one person retiring in the Finance Department, as Mrs. O'Shea mentioned, that's the normal course, and we thank her for her service. And when you have a CFO leaving abruptly in a Finance Department, it actually, it's a person who I'm actually delighted is leaving, quite frankly. So if he's running for the hills, I'm wondering what else he'd be running from. And time will tell. You know, I think it's an opportunity here to make the Finance Department stronger with a new CFO. It's something I wanted to actually do this year, but because the last council signed a one-year contract, I was tied this year. So I'm actually delighted that he's going. We get to replace him. We get to implement best practices, which I don't think were implemented by him or by the department in the past. And it's a good thing, despite what the Bergen Record would like to say, and Mr. De Gregorio would like to portray it, or the so-called crisis that they thought they were creating for us. Our Borough Administrator McMorro did a phenomenal job in one week of replacing that person with several great candidates, who we have now narrowed down to candidates that we would love to be able to work with. You know, as the mayor for the last five years, I've always said, I want to restore the rule of law in Englewood Cliffs, and this is a big part of it, and we're doing that. I and my administrations have always had, what in the compliance world would be referred to as the requisite compliance disposition. People who came in into council didn't necessarily have that in 2019 and 2020. In fact, we know they didn't. And so I'm just really thrilled and excited with the prospects of, once and for all, doing the last piece of borough turnaround, as I would refer to it, and I thank.
Well, I agree with you, mayor, 100%.
Councilman Wu, Councilman Katrubis, Councilman Pharaoh, and Councilman Park for being there to support this cleanup, which is so important to the residents. And here we are. Again, delighted that they're here. We had a great meeting with the candidates this evening. And, you know, the other thing, and I'll leave you with this note for everybody, is when the Bergen Record actually has an article, the real article is in the comments. So if you actually want to get the pulse of the public, read the comments. When I'm quoted, typically Katie Sobko and Bergen Record will paraphrase or cut parts of my quote in or out. And then when I go back and I try to ask them to put the whole quote in, or I actually try to put it into the comments section, I'm blocked. But you know what's funny is Mr. De Gregorio seems to have no problem at all having his comments put in like that. In fact, by the time Katie Sobko calls me for the Bergen Record, the article's already been written typically. She actually knows before the borough knows what actions are going to be taken by what I would call the cronies from the past, who seem to have a direct pipeline to David De Gregorio. Mr. De Gregorio seems to have a direct pipeline to Katie Sobko. Okay, that's not news. That's just being a scrivener for a political party. So I don't think that as a company owned by a penny stock company, they're going to be around for much longer. And it's a shame, because there are some journalists there who could do a job properly if permitted to do that. So Katie, I'm talking to you. So if there's anyone else in the public, and I thank Mrs. O'Shea for raising.
Can I respond to your comments?
Actually, this is public, this is public comment, so.
Well, I'm about following.
Is there anyone else in the public who wishes to be heard? Okay, seeing and hearing no one from the public, I would have a motion to close the public portion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Next up is Resolution 108, Authorization to Advertise for a Chief Financial Officer. Can I have a motion to do that, please?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
You have a roll call?
Councilperson Wu?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
No, with emphasis, the mayor is spending money like a drunken sailor.
You know, you should not characterize members of our society as drunken. It's just not polite language, okay?
Katrubis?
Yes.
It passes.
Thank you. Your metaphor is lost on the public, Mr. De Gregorio. Resolution 109, Award a Non-Fair and Open Contract to PKF O'Connor Davies, LLP Accountants and Advisors from Municipal Accountant Services. Now, this is the group that would replace the Bataglia and Associates Company. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilperson Wu?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
No, with emphasis, watch your taxes go up.
Katrubis?
Yes.
It passes.
Thank you. Resolution 110, authorize Tammy Zooka CPA, RMA, CMFO as a signatory for payroll checks. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Can I have a second, please? Thank you.
I'm sorry, who's seconded?
Councilman Wu?
Thank you.
Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilperson Wu?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
No.
Katrubis?
Yes.
It passes.
Okay, just for the record, Mr. De Gregorio voted no for someone to sign payroll checks. Payroll checks, these are checks that go to the borough employees for the work that they do, and Mr. De Gregorio just voted against that. Yes, Mrs. McMorro?
Mr. George, can you hear me?
Yes.
I don't see the resolution recommending the hiring of the temporary CFO, Tammy Zooka.
I always forward it up, I have it here, if you want me to read it, I will.
Can you read that as, is that number one?
Point of order, mayor.
It's 21109.
It can't be 21109 is the PKF. But you don't have it on the agenda. I believe, Mr. George, because it wasn't there, you're going to have to reopen to the public if you're adding that on now. And.
Okay, so.
I thought that was on the agenda.
On the agenda, the packet that was emailed, if that matters.
It wasn't, yeah, but because it was not distributed councilman to the, to the public on the agenda, you're going to have to add it, because you made the representation that you were adding nothing else other than 111, which was advertising for a part-time individual. So to be safe, you can add it, but you need to reopen to the public mayor on that. On that.
Okay, so we'll do that, that'll be number 111, and then there's also a 112 now, right?
112, you have the 111, and you have the 112, I guess, that you're going to add. Lizette, do you not have that resolution? Because it was just.
I don't have it on the package that was provided.
Now.
I went to Borough Hall, I picked up a package from the clerk.
Well, let Mr.
Let me, hold on a second, for the record, my package ends at 110. The one.
Well, let Mr. George comment, mayor, because he provided the resolutions.
Okay.
We provided Resolution Number 21107, which was on the agenda. That's to go out to advertise for the hiring of a regular chief financial officer.
107 is closed session, was that attributed 107 to a closed session resolution?
108 is the one that you just read, Mr. George.
108 we just did, that's PKF.
No, 109 is PKF.
108 is authorizing the Borough Clerk on behalf of the borough to advertise for a chief financial officer.
Okay, 109 is PKF.
Correct.
110 is authorize Tammy Zooka a signatory for payroll checks. Those three are on my agenda, those three have all been voted on and passed.
Correct.
111.
There should have been, before that, there should have been a recommendation to hire temporary CFO. I saw the resolution, so I don't.
It's not on my package, but we'll add it. The public.
George, if you could chime in.
The original agenda that we got yesterday, the day before, had listed as 107 and 108, which was for accounting services and for to go out to advertise for CFO. And according to the agenda, it says other matters may be added.
I believe, I believe Ms. Duffy changed the resolution numbers because she needed to.
That may be possible, that's correct, and that's why they may not match. But we had also prepared the resolution for the appointment of the interim CFO and to add the signatory for payroll checks, which we're prepared it. So if you.
We can add 112?
We can add the next, we can add the next numbered resolution. But let's just clarify first. The resolution to be added, one of the resolutions to be added on under the agenda subject to change would be the appointment of the interim CFO.
Okay.
The next one, number, and we'll go with Borough Clerk Duffy's numbering, because.
112.
They may have shifted in between preparing it and preparing the resolutions. That's to authorize the interim CFO as a signatory on payroll. And then the one that's added now, as a result of discussion, is a fifth resolution, which would be to allow the Borough Administrator to advertise for part-time help in the financial office.
Okay, so.
I guess would be 112.
Correct.
And those would be the resolutions, so if you, at your wish, Mr. Mayor, should you wish to reopen, you reopen as to 110, 111, and 112.
110 we just voted on.
I just, mayor, just for a point of clarity, Mr. George, from a technical standpoint, they voted for a signatory of adding Ms. Zooka prior to her being appointed a temporary CFO. Is there an issue there, in your opinion?
What I would do is, I do think that you should pass the resolution appointing her as the interim CFO, and therefore entertain a motion to recall the resolution authorizing the signatory, then bring it up again. So you'd have, mayor, you would entertain a motion to retract the prior motion, proceed to the motion to appoint Tammy Zooka as interim CFO, and then reopen or return and entertain a motion to allow her as a signatory.
Okay, so I'd like to know, though, from our clerk tomorrow, what happened here? Because this is odd and troubling. So look, I need a motion to retract, revoke Resolution 110 that was just voted on. Basically repealing it, have a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
I have a roll call.
Councilperson Wu?
Yes.
Pharaoh?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
De Gregorio?
Upstaying.
Katrubis?
Yes.
Okay, what I'd like to do now is open to the public as we have now added and reshuffled a bit here. We have added Resolution 110, which is authorizing the appointment of an interim CFO with Ms. Tammy Zooka.
Mayor, I believe it has a different number now, because you had a 110, and you just retracted it.
No, I know, that's going to be, the old 110 is going to become 111, right? Because we have to appoint Ms. Zooka first, that's now 110.
Mr. George, if you have a resolution that you retracted, can you use that same number again, or you have to skip over it?
No, you can.
I understand, you're saying.
No, because you're going to, you're going to reintroduce it after you appoint, assuming that the vote goes that way. After you appoint the interim CFO, you're going to again move the resolution. So it would be the same numbered resolution.
Okay, so that has to stay the same, mayor.
That's why the vote was to retract it.
Okay, but you wanted to appoint the interim CFO first.
Correct.
Authorize the signatory.
Yes, you have to have someone with a name there before you can name that person to sign.
So the appointment is now 110, correct?
I believe so.
And then the payroll checks is one. Hold on, let me just finish this, please.
Well.
The retraction, and we shouldn't have to do this, and I'm not happy about this, but the retraction, does that get a number, yes or no, Mr. George?
No.
Okay, so we're going to open to the public to discuss the appointment of an interim CFO, number 110. We're going to open to the public to discuss authorizing Ms. Zooka CPA, RMA, CMFO as a signatory for payroll checks, that's 111. And we're going to open to the public for authorizing the Borough Administrator to advertise for part-time help in the Finance Department. That's number 112.
Point of order, mayor, for a minute, please. Mr. George, first of all, are we allowed to take a part-time recess in the middle of this, or no?
I can read.
Mr. George?
Yes.
I can recess.
I'll be able to.
Yeah, certainly.
So that I may speak with you, with the Borough Clerk, just to try and figure out the.
Okay, let's have a recess. Everyone in the public is going in the waiting room for a minute.
I don't believe the council can be here while we speak, because we're not in closed session.
Okay, thanks, everyone, we went into recess, and we're at a recess now. We had to clarify an issue on the agenda in a resolution.
Yes, mayor, and I'd like to thank you for the time, the confusion, there were many resolutions prepared. The Borough Administrator was working tirelessly all afternoon, and in the exchange of constant emails with the resolutions, as she made sure that they were correct and okay, there was a confusion in sorting one of them, and I apologize for that confusion.
Okay, thank you.
There was no error on my behalf, Mr. George, I just want to make that clear, the way that.
No, clearly, clearly, going back and forth, the confusion was on our end in making sure we got the material to you.
So Resolution 108, Authorization to Advertise for a Chief Financial Officer, that's been approved.
Yes.
Resolution 109, Award a Non-Fair and Open Contract to PKF O'Connor Davies, LLP, Accountants and Advisors from Municipal Accounting Services, that has been approved.
Yes.
The, I did see some letters from PKF onboard before, thank you very much. Look forward to working with you. Now we're doing 109A, 110, and 111, and we're going to open up to the public for those. And I just need you to say what they are.
I will, your honor, in fact, I'll read them by title.
If you can read 109A in its entirety, Mr. George.
Sure, I may need to stop to get a quick drink of water, it's a long one. Resolution 21-109A, Resolution of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs authorizing the appointment and award of contract to Tammy Zooka CPA, RMA, CMFO of Colditz and Zooka LLC as CFO for the Borough of Englewood Cliffs for the remainder of calendar year 2021. Whereas the Borough of Englewood Cliffs has a need to acquire professional services. of a chief financial officer as a non-fair and open contract pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 19:44A-20.5 and whereas the position of chief financial officer is a recognized profession regulated by law requiring extensive and specialized training, and as such is an exception to the bidding requirements set forth in NJSA 40A:11-5 that's that. And whereas the Borough's Acting Administrator has determined that the value of the acquisition will exceed $17,500 and well, whereas the anticipated term of this contract is for the remainder of the calendar year through December 31, 2021, and until a successor is qualified and appointed. And whereas Tammy Zucca CPA, RMA, CMFO of the Firm of Colditz and Zucca LLC has submitted a proposal indicating she will provide the professional services as a chief financial officer to assist the Borough with its finance department operations. And whereas Tammy Zucca CPA, RMA, CMFO, and the Firm of Colditz and Zucca LLC have completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification, which certifies that Tammy Zucca CPA, RMA, CMFO, and the Firm of Colditz and Zucca LLC have not made any reportable contributions to a political or candidate committee in the Borough of Englewood Cliffs in the previous one year, and this appointed contract will prohibit Tammy Zucca CPA, RMA, CMFO, and the Firm of Colditz and Zucca LLC from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract. And whereas funds are available for this contract and are available through the Borough of Englewood Cliffs budget. Now therefore be it resolved that the governing body of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs, County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, hereby authorizes the Mayor and the Borough Clerk to enter into the contract with Tammy Zucca CPA, RMA, CMFO, and the Firm of Colditz and Zucca LLC to provide professional services as chief financial officer for a fee not to exceed $40,000. And be it further resolved that the business entity disclosure certification and the determination of value be placed on file with this resolution. And be it further resolved that an official notice of this action shall be published in accordance with the law.
Okay. Should we now open to the public?
I'm going to read 11, the next two.
Yes, go ahead.
The additional ones, which will be 111 and 112, I believe.
110 and 111.
110, 111, okay. Resolution of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs, Amending Resolution 21-31 As to Authorize Signatory to Sign Payroll Checks. Whereas the Borough of Englewood Cliffs previously adopted Resolution 2131, which authorized Chris Pataglia as the chief financial officer for the Borough to be the signatory authorized to sign payroll checks for Borough Officers and Employees in accordance with the salary schedules contained within the official salary ordinance in accordance with Borough processes and procedures. And since the adoption of Resolution 2131, Chris Pataglia attended his resignation from the Borough of Englewood Cliffs and as chief financial officer. And whereas the Borough of Englewood Cliffs contemplates hiring a new chief financial officer, Tammy Zucca CPA, RMA, CMFO and the Firm of Colditz and Zucca LLC, whether same as either in the official acting or interim capacity. And whereas the Borough of Englewood Cliffs wishes to authorize the interim chief financial officer to be an authorized signatory to sign the payroll checks for Borough Officers and employees in accordance with the salary schedules contained within the official salary ordinance. Now therefore be it resolved by the Mayor and Borough Council of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs in the County of Bergen and State of New Jersey, that Resolution 2131 shall be amended to reflect that Tammy Zucca CPA, RMA, CMFO is designated as an authorized signatory to sign the payroll checks for Borough Officers and Employees in accordance with the salary schedules contained within the official salary ordinance. And be it further resolved, this resolution shall take effect pursuant to law. Then last resolution is the one that was proposed to allow for the advertisement to start search for a part-time finance member in the Finance Department. Resolution of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs Authorizing the Borough Clerk on behalf of the Borough to advertise for part-time employment in the Finance Department. Whereas the Borough of Englewood Cliffs is considering hiring part-time finance department and position, which position is authorized pursuant to NJSA 40:40A:9 that's that. And whereas the Mayor and Borough Council desire to place an advertisement for said position in order to find a qualified individual to find the position. Now therefore be it resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs, County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, that the Borough Clerk in conjunction with the Acting Borough Administrator is hereby authorized to advertise for the position of part-time employee in the Finance Department. What number is that?
111, 11.
Okay. Should I open to the public now?
Yes.
Do you have a motion to open to the public?
I can.
Officer. Does anyone from the public who wishes to be heard? Please wait for me to recognize you. Wave your hand virtually or in person, and state your name and address. So if there's anyone from the public, please go ahead and raise your hand.
Hello.
I see a person there. Okay, yes, with your hand raised.
Is that me? Mrs. Karen Geiger, 270 Alfred. I have some questions about what was just recited. I am somewhat confused about what I think appeared to be two conflicting numbers. The attorney, Mr. George, said that Ms. Zucca was to be hired at the price of 17.5, but the not to exceed was 40,000. Did I mishear that?
Not what he said, yeah. That's not what he said.
Well, could you just explain how much she will be paid?
Her hourly rate is $110 an hour.
I didn't ask that. He read a number of 17.5, and he read a number of 40,000. I'd like clarity on what those two numbers are, please.
Mayor, shall I explain what the language of the resolution?
Yes, Mr. George, please go ahead. Ms. Geiger is pretty well aware of how we function as a government. There's an hourly rate, it's not to exceed, but go ahead.
The statutory amount, regardless of what the position would be or what the contract would be for the baseline in the local public contracts law is 17,500. However, this is a professional services contract because of the special skills involved. And therefore, you have to name the threshold. However, the actual contract itself, since it's an hourly contract, we listed a number where, you know, the Borough wanted to make sure that there was control over this through December 31, so they put in an amount of not to exceed 40,000 based upon reasonable expectation of what CFO services might cost.
Okay, can I get some more information? So the 17.5 is actually the public bidding numbers.
Yes.
Correct.
You're not going to out to bid on this, because it's a professional service contract. But the amount that this one, this person is permitted to to receive under our form of government, in her capacity serving the Borough, is not to exceed 40,000.
Cannot exceed 40,000.
Cannot exceed 40,000.
Geiger, Mr. If I may assist in this, please. If you see Resolution 108, Authorization to Advertise for a Chief Financial Officer, we're going to be going out to advertise immediately after this. This is a situation, everyone knows, that Chris Pataglia abruptly resigned. We need to put a temporary individual on for signatory reasons. We're aware of that. The not to exceed, my opinion, we will, is much higher than what I would have recommended it to be. But Mr. George knows I called him about that, and we're advertising right away to not even have it in this.
Yeah, thank you, Mrs. McMorris, for clarifying that, because as you know, I believe the budget includes less than $8,000 for the services of Mr. Pataglia to help the Borough. So I'd like to know how these two positions relate. The $40,000 figure seems to be excessively high.
It is. I agree with you.
Given what we were spending for Mr. Pataglia's services, and he has always served us very well, to my recollection. So I don't understand why we're increasing the amount to an amount greater than his full annuals, annual compensation when.
Well, I'd be more than happy to answer that, Mrs. Geiger. Whether or not he was serving us well is, 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 you know, up for. But what I say, what I, what my opinion is, the Borough did not have enough hours from Pataglia Associates and the CFO, so that is going to immediately be looked at by PKF and the temporary CFO. And they're, within, within two weeks, I'm anticipating I'm going to get an update as to what their recommendation is for how many hours we need. They're, they're already recommending that we were light on the CFO hourly rate from two. He was only serving two hours. They believe we probably need at least a minimum of four hours for the CFO. And their recommendation on the back end of what actually Pataglia Associates was doing, which is what the PKF will replace them with, they believe that they're, they were shy, maybe two to three hours as well. We'll get a better idea in two weeks, and we just need to get them in there to give us that assessment.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
I shouldn't.
I question. I question how well we're served by a professional who abruptly quits in the middle of a month. Ms. Geiger, I think you're skewed in your outlook. I think that was a very unprofessional move on his part. And I think that anyone who's a professional who does that doesn't value their, themselves very much, if that's what they do as a professional. Anybody else?
May I say, may I say something now, without being muted?
Are you a member of the public?
No, I am, I'd like to respond
to.
To Ms. Geiger. And, and to you both. No, so.
No, we're not together. Ms. Geiger and I are not together, so you can respond to her separately and respond to me.
Okay, so I think that, you know, we're asking paid professionals that are profiting from our town what their judgment is on what we need. I think we're asking the wrong people. We need to get our minds, our own minds around what we need in the Borough. If I were a salesman, I would say you're going to need 3,000 hours of service. So that's where I think that we need to do an analysis, and we need not depend on the professionals 100%.
Well, that's fair. What, what have you done in the last week to educate yourself about what we need to do? Because Ms. McMorris and I did a lot.
I have asked very, very many questions, and you know that. And I, we cannot talk about closed session here, but I was asking questions.
But what have you done in the last week to educate yourself outside of?
That's, do you, I am not on the stand, on the witness stand. So I am not going to answer or entertain you or
Okay.
or even pay attention to your question.
Well, you raised.
I am stating something that is valid, and you agreed to it.
Yeah.
So don't change the subject. So why don't we work together and find out how many hours we need?
Well, I already.
And be responsible.
I, you know what, while you're so busy giving interviews with Katie Sobko and creating the Degrigorio.
You're changing the subject again. That means you lost.
When you're busy doing the Katie Sobko Degrigorio Law Sign, Ms. McMorris and I, and Councilman Wu, and Councilman Katrubis, we actually figured out what we need to do here, okay? Because we're here to work. We're not here for soundbites, okay? We're here to work. We know what we need. We're all on board. We're comfortable with what we need, and we're also comfortable with improving the systems. And as I said earlier, I was upset in the beginning of the year that Mr. Pataglia was going to have to spend another year with us. So he did me a great favor by just leaving. Yes, it's been an uncomfortable three days or four days, five days. But it's not the first obstacle that we face. I mean, for crying out loud, we have faced some, some pretty bad people in this town in terms of what they've done, and we, we've dealt with it. We've come out better as a Borough for our residents. I see Ms. McMorris' hand is raised, so I'm going to recognize her.
Thank you, Mayor, just for the public's edification. And in response to me, Mr. Degrigorio, I know he has this information already, but I want to make sure the public does as well. We have met with the Finance Department, I have, every single day. I have taken their input. I, I take their input first and foremost. And that input is going to be shared with these professionals that are coming in. Of course, we are not going to solely take the recommendation of what paid professionals are going to tell us. But as Mr. Degrigorio knows, the Finance Department has desperately been asking for an additional hire in that Finance Department. It was only until I came into office, Mr. Degrigorio, that we actually placed that ad and started to fulfill that wish. So that's why, again, you see this ad on the resolution tonight. And with these new professionals and the members of the Finance Department together, the Borough is going to determine what is the best amount of hours that is going to serve the residents properly, do it efficiently, and have that department run as it should be.
Right. You mentioned you, you came into office. I, I'm not sure if that's the right terminology. You came into employment in the Borough.
Into my position, yes.
I came into office, you came into employment.
I have an office, Mr. Degrigorio. It's the, it's the Administrator's office, and you attack me every meeting.
I'm not attacking you. I'm not attacking you. I'm just clarifying, that's all.
I'm well aware of what my position is. I have an office. It's on the second floor. You're aware of that.
Do you dispute the? Do you dispute that, Mr. Degrigorio, that there's actually an office holder for the Borough Administrator?
You are an office holder. Ms. McMorris is an employee. Ms.
Well, I guess Mr. Katrubis could say that he's actually elected office holder. You're just an appointed office holder, and I see Mr. Katrubis' hand.
We have, we have the exact. Again, 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 you're climbing tree.
I have Mr. Katrubis.
Yeah, I just want the, the public to please just keep an open mind. This is a welcome change for the Borough. There's a lot of checks and balances that are being put in place. The extra added costs are really minimal, and it's, it's a very prudent action, and it's unfortunate that the CFO decided to resign for whatever reasons. But life must go on, and we're putting in the appropriate changes, so let's just try to keep an open mind and not try to politicize the situation, please.
I just want to go on the record that I've been continually muted while I'm saying things, and I, that needs to be that needs to be on the record, because that's undemocratic.
Well, actually, let, let's make it more democratic. You're muted because you were interrupting Mr. Katrubis. You had your chance to speak. You said what you wanted to say, and then Mr. Katrubis started speaking. And for the record, you interrupted him. Right? So what do you want me to do? Let you speak over Mr. Katrubis, who actually legitimately held the floor, because he raised his hand, and he was recognized. Whereas you, for whatever reason, you think that you could just jump in and speak, just like you could talk to Katie Sobko at the Bergen Record. We're not the Bergen Record. We're an actual government here, okay? Raise your hand, and you'll be recognized. Mrs.
You know.
Mrs. O'Shea has the floor. Let me unmute you, please. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I just would like to say that regarding Mr. Degrigorio being muted, the proper decorum. The proper decorum at a meeting is to be recognized before you speak. And when you interrupt, you should be muted, okay? The public is not freelancing and speaking out of turn. The council shouldn't be freelancing and speaking out of turn. You need to be recognized. You say what you want to say and then you're done. It's not a platform as, as some previous council people kept saying. Stop being political. Stop being this. Stop, stop doing politics. And Mr. De Gregorio needs to learn to stop doing politics. I'd also wanted to say thank you to Mrs. Romano for her hard work in the Finance Department for so many years. And I'm sure with the few hours that I'm hearing that the CFO put in. That she was carrying the load for him in the Finance Department and being overworked without any assistance. So her retirement is very well earned and she worked very hard. So I'm not surprised that the CFO left because she was carrying him. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Shea.
Yeah, Mrs. O'Shea, can I respond to your comment, please?
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to be heard?
Maybe Ms. O'Shea can ask about.
You, you asked her a question. If you could respond to her, she said no, so.
Yeah, it's no problem.
On you.
But I think. To know about the details of her retirement.
Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to be heard? Okay, have a motion to come out of closed session, please.
So moved.
Motion to close, not come out of closed session.
I'm sorry.
We're not in closed session.
Have a motion to close the public portion. It's been a long day.
That's correct. So moved.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so, Mr. George, we've already voted on 108 and 109, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and now we're voting on 109A.
109A, 110 and 111 as read into the record.
Okay, so can I have a motion for 109A, please?
So moved.
Second. Have a roll call.
Councilperson Wu.
Yes.
Pharaoh.
Yes.
Park.
Yes.
De Gregorio.
No.
Katrubis.
Yes.
Passes.
Thank you. Passes.
As read into the record, give a motion for 110.
So moved.
Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Councilperson Wu.
Yes.
Pharaoh.
Yes.
Park.
Yes.
De Gregorio.
No.
Katrubis.
Yes.
Thank you.
As read into the record, could I have a motion to pass Resolution 111?
Promote.
Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Councilperson Wu.
Yes.
Pharaoh.
Yes.
Park.
Yes.
De Gregorio.
No.
Katrubis.
Yes.
It passes.
Thank you, everyone, for joining our special meeting tonight. That's all the business that we will conduct tonight and that we can't conduct tonight pursuant to the agenda and the notice. Mr. George, thank you for attending and for your help tonight. And I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Thank you all. It was a pleasure attending your meeting for the first time.
Good night, Mr. George.
Bye.
All in favor of the adjournment? All right.
Bye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, thank you, Mr. George. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Bye.